All right, we're going to call this workshop the Louisville City Council to order. It is Monday, May 1st, and we do have a quorum. It's 6:15 PM. First up on the agenda is discussion of the regular agenda items and consent agenda items. We have a proclamation for National Drinking Water Week. We have item D1, public hearing. It's our annual youth recreational program standards of care required by the state. Item F, consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I had a question on the custodial services one. I figured out every building in town. Where is the wellness clinic and the CrossFit facility?
So those should...
So the CrossFit facility is actually over Garden Ridge and Valley.
In the strip mall there.
Yeah, PD, it's a rental space. PD and buyer, some select staff utilize that. And then the Wellness Clinic is down on Round Brook.
Round Brook.
Sorry. And now, that's, I don't know if I'm well stocked on the Wellness Clinic, but that's where our staff utilizes the healthcare.
Maybe well to go there.
And a great tool. I had a few years ago. Moving on to item G, if there's no further questions on the consent. G6, consideration of appointing a replacement representative.
Did you?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it.
We'll bump you to...
I'd like to be alternate.
Be alternate.
Okay.
So we've got some language here that we can...
Please go on through.
But I'll get that to whoever wants to make that.
Got it.
Thank you both for doing that. Just an interesting tidbit on that. They've asked us to continue to do that, but the seat that we're representing is 80,000 to 120,000 in population. We're going to exceed that, so there's going to be a question of whether we even have a seat on this board next year.
Is this a big one for you?
Well, we've got to figure that out. But this term expires in 2024. So whoever's doing that, that may be part of the conversations to have just as a sidebar with the folks down there. We do not have any closed session. And if there are no further questions on the agenda, we will go ahead and move to item, workshop item B, neighborhood grants update. And we have Ashley Farin here to present.
Hello, good evening. How's everybody?
How are you?
Good. So just going to give you guys a quick update on how our neighborhood grants are going so far. A little history, we have a few grant programs. Our property enhancement program was started in 2016 and is our most successful program so far. We'll go in a little bit more detail in a slide or two. Love Your Block and Neighborhood Enhancement Program came around in 2019, and then six months later, the pandemic hit. So these are programs that were not around for about a year and a half or so, so we're slowly building back up on those, too. And then the Property Pet Plus, excuse me, and then Code Abatement came around in 2021. And they are in a particular neighborhood empowerment zone that we'll look at. And then upcoming, we have our Minor Housing Rehab Program. So we've done a lot of marketing. Our Neighborhood Services Grant Specialist Brian McGreen has been really actively marketing our grant programs. So we did a mail out of postcard. This is some pictures of our postcard that we mailed out to every single family home in the city of Louisville, just over 20,000 homes. We've created a new trifold brochure. We do monthly neighborhood grant workshops at Thrive, Library, and at The Grant. We've done six so far. Last month, we did one also in Castle Hill specifically. So we did two in the month of April, and we've had 32 attendees so far. And our next one is May 16th at the Library. And then some neighborhood engagement events that we have. A new one is Nothing But Net. This is an event for neighborhood residents to come and learn about not only our neighborhood services, but also other city services and programs for our residents. Our most recent one was in March at Thrive where we had over 800 attendees. So pretty successful event. We're really excited to continue to see that one grow. And then also this year, we did our first tri-city neighborhood summit with the cities of Capel and Flower Mound. It was held in Capel. And we had different workshop sessions for residents to come and learn about how to engage their neighbors and different legal clinics, things like that. So it was very successful, and we'll be hosting it next year. And then we have been working with CRT on creating a communications plan on social media, different news weight outlets, so that we can really be promoting our programs. And then working on consistent branding. We've created logos for all of our programs, and we've spent just over $6,000 on my marketing this year so far. So first, our Love Your Block is a $500 reimbursable grant for neighborhoods. It's really about encouraging community within our neighborhoods. So far, as of today, we've done 13 grants. They've all been very specific to neighborhood parties. So if you wanted to have a block party, you can use these funds for food, bounce house, face painting. And so of those 13 grants, 11 of them have also had our Rocket Block trailer, which is free for people to reserve. So this picture is a block party. All of these tables and chairs and pop-ups, that's from the Rocket Block. And then that bounce house and the food, Love Your Block was able to pay for that. Our Neighborhood Enhancement Program, this is a reimbursable grant, 50% up to $12,500. It's really about revitalizing our neighborhoods. The neighborhoods do have to have a bank account because that's a lot of money to give to an individual. So we're looking for neighborhoods that are organized, they have an association or a volunteer board that has a bank account. So we've awarded four projects so far. Three of them have been completed, and so we've been able to reimburse just over $21,000 for that. And we've got one in the works right now that is anticipated to get the full $12,500. This is our very first one. This one happened right before, this is the beginning of 2020. They put these solar-powered lights along all their walkways, the walking paths in their neighborhood. So PEP, PEP is PEPHY is what we like to say in our department. So this is up to 50% reimbursable grant for homeowners doing exterior work on their single-family homes. We've done 256 projects as of today, and anyone's eligible. Everyone's eligible for at least up to $1,000, but if you qualify as low to moderate income, you can get up to $5,000 reimbursed. So part of the Listen, Learn, Lead recommendation that came out of that was to start collecting and maintaining race and ethnicity of our neighborhood grant applicants. So this is our PEP applicant so far. As you can see, the majority of our applicants are white and non-Hispanic. So as we build our other programs, we'll start collecting this information as well. So 45% of our PEP applicants have been low to moderate income, and then 11% have been disabled, and then 36% of all of our applicants have been 62 years or older. This is a map we wanted to show you of where our PEP applicants have been so far. So what we're doing with this is we're looking at where our applicants are of people that maybe have never applied for PEP, and so that we can do some more targeted marketing in those areas. There's more Castle Hills. They just haven't made it onto the map yet. So upcoming program is our Minor Housing Rehab. This is specifically funded through Community Development Block Grant, where all the other programs have been general funded. So this is specific to low, moderate-income homeowners who need HVAC or necessary electrical work replaced or repaired. The city would pay the contractor directly up to $15,000. So we're working through the guidelines on that right now with legal. So this is our neighborhood empowerment zone number two. This was approved in 2020, and so this came out of a council pitch from 2019, I believe. So using this zone to really focus some additional dollars to really revitalize these communities. So PEP Plus and Code Abatement came out of these, this area. So PEP Plus is for any homeowner in that zone, and they're eligible for up to 25% reimbursement, up to $20,000. So it's very similar to PEP, but they can get a little bit more funding. But when you look at PEP to PEP Plus, to benefit from this program, a homeowner has to spend at least $16,000 on exterior repairs to their house. So when we get PEP applications coming in, we're looking at where they live to see if PEP or PEP Plus are going to be better for them. We've also done some targeted marketing in that area for PEP Plus, but we've only been able to do two of these projects so far. So when you think about the area that it is and the amount of money they have to spend on their house, it's a lot of dollars for those people in those communities. So we haven't had much success with this program. So we're looking for direction today. Our staff recommendation for, to change PEP Plus up a little bit is to allow this program to go citywide and for homes that were built in the 1980s or older. So expanding that out a little bit, go ahead.
Can I clear that? You said homes built in the 1980s?
Sorry, in 1980 or older.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, yes, clearly that 1980, back, 1984.
Back.
Okay, so 1974.
RH, March.
Goodness.
Yeah. This is... This is an opportunity to see if there are other neighborhoods in our community that may benefit from this program more than this two has so far.
Brandon, was the PEP plant, the PEP Plus yours? I mean, were you one of the ones that kind of seeded that? I forgot.
No.
Neil?
Neil was in.
Okay. I think just from the limit, we've only had two projects. There's a lot of opportunity, I think, we missed if we can figure that out.
And this is just an opportunity to see if this program can be successful elsewhere. We'll try it out for a couple of years, see how it goes. If that doesn't work, we'll come back with some other options, but this is just kind of a step out to see what that looks like.
Wait, I'm sorry, wait, Chris.
I was just going to ask, do we have an idea of, you know, what percentage of our single-family housing stock would fall within, would now be eligible for this? Do we have? We can get that.
Yeah, I can. I would imagine that it's probably somewhere less than 50%, but I really need to look at subdivision age.
Yeah, you can definitely pull that. And I would assume that the neighborhood where it's currently designated to would kind of still fall within the eligibility of that. Yes.
I would think, especially in Silver Creek, because I'm looking at a bunch of people where, people behind me wearing the emperor rotas for retaining walls that are basically every day I'm watching them fall in, they would be a good...
You should have said it before.
Good people to reach out to, because, I mean, just this last week, a tree fell, and I reported it into the alleyway behind there. So a lot of those residents probably don't know about the program. They probably could actually get together to see if maybe one contractor can come, you know, and they can all get their grant, because they are all falling into the alleyway.
Do we know why we haven't had more uptake in that zone?
I think it's because of the amount. Like, people in that area are applying for PEP, but when you look at how much they're wanting to spend on their project, it's more beneficial for them to apply for regular PEP versus PEP Plus. It's the dollar amount. That makes it a beneficial program for them.
Is there a reason, and this is just because of the second, because of the second one, the second council direction, is there a reason we haven't thought about paying the contractor directly for PEP Plus and keeping it focused?
That's also an option. We just, we were going to try to pilot it with the next program to see about paying the contractor directly with Code Abatement.
Okay.
But that's definitely an option.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't want to, you guys have spent a lot more time, so I'm not going to recommend flipping that around, but I would say that if the direct payment thing works and doesn't overburden staff, then this PEP Plus might be, we might be able to target it a little bit better and do that and still get that focused outcome that we might want.
I think it's still also a reimbursement program, so the homeowner is still going to be paying, not the full, because this is only 25%.
Yeah.
So the homeowner still would be paying some of it. So that might be, if it's a little less on the homeowner.
I think it probably is a deterrent. I can see 16 grand can be a pretty substantial amount.
All at once. Yeah, the new retaining wall along Bell Air looks really good, though, by the way, speaking of railroad ties being replaced.
Yeah.
Council, is there any objection to direction one? Everybody feels like that's a positive direction?
Let me try. Let me try. Thank you. So, oops. So the second program in that zone is called Code Abatement. So this is specific to our low, moderate-income homeowners that live in that zone. They must be referred by a code officer and have a code violation. So we are not actively promoting this program in the zone. We're working with our code officers. If they are giving a letter in that zone, they are putting in a little flyer that's in their letter going to the homeowners. So this is 100% reimbursed, up to $7,500. We have not completed a single project with this. We've had interest. We've had, our code officers are actively promoting this program. We've also worked to see if our animal services officers, they're out there when they lose dogs, it's because of fences or things like that, they are also helping us promote this program. And then Brian is also working with code and IT, and he's getting recurring reports on code violations in that area with contact information, and he's also reaching out to the homeowners in that area. But when you look at, it's a low, moderate-income homeowner, the code violation, they may not be able to afford to fix it in the first place, and this is a reimbursement program. So we are coming for direction, and our recommendation is to allow this program, I went the wrong way.
Two more slides.
Sorry. I don't know what else, and I've forgotten to work it. Is to go, the city pay the contractor directly. So the homeowner still has to go through the same process. They have to apply, they have to get the three quotes, and then we would pay the contractor directly as the city. When I was looking at this presentation, when I was looking at the slide number 14, and it's talking about no projects have been completed, my thought went, well, why don't we just pay them directly, because they probably can't afford it? And then I flipped the slide, and I was like, okay, great. That is a good suggestion. That's what we think coming up with here.
I am. I'm hearing that you have direction.
Great. All right, that's all I got.
Thank you and the team.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
For your side. So back, when we look at the breakdown by this new race, was that, is that applicants? Are that applicants or awards?
It's awards.
It's awards. Okay.
Yes.
Do we have, do we have the applicant numbers as well? It'd be interesting to see how those line up.
We can get them free.
Okay, awesome. And then I have one more question. So look at that, if I look at the application online, and I think we've got some really good results with hiring by removing the names, addresses, and things like that from the HR process, and I wonder what the thought is about doing that same thing for the application process of this program as well?
Removing the resident's name from the application?
Anything that would indicate race, this, anything like that? Because it seems to have been working for our HR policy, our HR process here. I wonder if we should do something similar. Put that for consideration.
We used to not collect the epic, but when the Listen, Learn, Lead report came out, that was a recommendation.
So we're not talking about, I'm not talking about collecting the race at the bottom. I'm talking about removing the indications of race from name, all the things that remove HR application or job, remove those same things.
We can look into that for sure. And Chris, it's my understanding that the, that information is voluntary of the applicants, so they don't have to. No, not, I know what you're saying. Yeah, no, I know what you're saying. I just wanted the council to know that the information we have is just what's been provided. It's not complete information of who has received grants. It's just who's provided that information.
And by that same token, if we're going to pass that application along to the folks who make decisions, and we're going to remove address, names like that, we're going to remove the bottom part as well with the optional information, otherwise you negate the whole purpose of it.
I think the only, the only requirement is just proof of income, right? I mean, that's...
Well, that they live in the home.
Yeah, okay. Proof of residency and proof of income are really the only requirements on this. The rest is all voluntary information. So.
At some point, you get the address, right?
Yeah.
And you've got to know they live there. They own the place. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Next up, workshop session, item C, discussion of commission for accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agency, also known as CAPRA, their visit and self-assessment review. And it looks like we have our Preserved and Rebuilt Manager, Chris Chastain, and our administrative analyst, Jose Marinas, to present.
Yeah, thank you so much for being with some time this evening. We just wanted to provide everybody with a quick refresher on what accreditation means for us, how it's attained, where we are in the process, and kind of where our next steps are. So I'm joined today, I'm Chris Chastain, Preserving and Rebuilt Manager, also serving as our accreditation manager for our agency. I'm joined by Jose Marinas, our admin analyst. As of October last year, there was an intern with us for nine months, and we were able to bring him on full-time and throw him right to the fire as far as accreditation goes. And so he's been pitching against it in meetings and keeping us organized. So he's going to start us off and bring everyone to speed on what CAPRA is and why we're interested in it at all.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Today, I will give you the what is, the why, and the timeline of CAPRA. So let's start off with what is CAPRA? And how do I do this? All right, so what is CAPRA? CAPRA stands for the Commission for Accreditation of Park and Recreation Agencies. This commission develops standards for national accreditation and provides an authoritative assessment tool for park and recreation agencies. Departments are independently evaluated against established benchmarks, and this is a quality assurance and quality improvement process demonstrating the agency's commitment to employees, volunteers, patrons, and the community. There are 154 standards categorized into 10 chapters. 36 fundamental standards must be met. 106 of the remaining 118 must be met. That is about 90% of the standards. And in the recreation process, every five years, 112 of those must be met. To put this into perspective of CAPRA, there are 193 accredited agencies in the nation. This is less than 1% of all the agencies in the nation. There are 22 accredited agencies in the state of Texas, half of those being in the Dallas-Fort Worth So why CAPRA? CAPRA is in our vision and vision to become the best department in the state of Texas. And this is a stamp to show that we are already up there in the leading agencies of the state of Texas. It's in our strategic plan that everybody knows the resources that Play Louisville offers to the community, that everybody plays, where every resident will have access to a park within a 10-minute walk, and that everybody is welcome and safe and physically and emotionally welcome at a park. It establishes a playbook. Throughout this process, we have created policies, standards, and procedures that has put us at the national level of standards, and it is a continuity of service and community experience. It is a justification for growth, involvement, and funding, and it is prestige and honor. This is the best way to demonstrate that we are doing the best at the national level. And it confirms that Louisville is a great place to live. General timeline requirements. Stacy and managers attended the CAPRA training sessions from October to December of 2021. They submitted the preliminary application in December of 2021. And since 2022 to now, we have been preparing our self-assessment report that we submitted on March 13th. And where we are right now, we are hosting an onsite visit in three weeks, and Chris will give you further details on that. In October of this year, the NRPA conference is going to be held in Dallas, and that is where we receive the decision on our accreditation status. Ongoing, we will submit to CAPRA an annual report of our agency's status for recreditation every five years. So every year, we will submit a report required by CAPRA. And with that, I will give Chris Chastain, our CAPRA manager, the floor on our visit week.
All right, thanks, Jose. So like Jose mentioned, we are now three weeks away from our actual visit. So part of CAPRA is putting together our self-assessment report as dictating that we meet the standards laid out. And then they will select a team of visitors from around the country, usually have been involved in their own CAPRA processes, come with national certifications to visit us here at our agency and see how we put those things into practice that we said we're doing and providing. So our agency contact is myself. Our advisor is Tracy Pegram from High Point Parks in North Carolina. If everything goes the way that we want and hope and plan for it to go, we'll never talk to Tracy at all. Tracy's role as advisor is that if there's ever a discretion between us, the agency, and our visiting team reviewing, they think we're missing something, we think we provided it, anything like that, the advisor is someone who's usually done multiple visits, usually 10 or more, who can step in and be that third party, that expert opinion in the room and kind of make sure everything is set straight and continues on without issues. So again, we've met her at introduction meetings, but if we get through the visit and don't pick up the phone and call Tracy, that means we've done our job appropriately. Our CRT lead is Bob Beerscheid. He's currently retired, but formerly the Director of St. Paul, Minnesota Parks and Recreation. He's made multiple visits himself. We've had several conversations leading up to this. Our first CRT member is Shelley Fisher from the city of Wentzville Parks and Rec, that's in the St. Louis area. She'll be coming out to visit. Our second member is Francisco Messini from Monmouth County Park System up in New Jersey. And you'll see in these listed names, we have stars next to them. The people with stars are going to be those who actually make the trip out to Louisville. Francisco will participate, will be from a virtual role. This is a little bit different historically, before COVID, all three of your team members made the trip out for CAPRA visits. After COVID came, the whole process actually went virtual across the board. 2023 is the first year that they're doing in-person visits again, but they've tweaked it a little bit by only sending your top two visit team members, with the third one being a virtual. This was done mostly to help smaller agencies. We are responsible for funding this trip and this visit, so we're taking care of transportation logistics for Bob and Shelley. And for agencies smaller than us across the country, a lot of times, finding ways to transport three people, show them around, put them in hotels can be pretty cumbersome. So NRPA is trying this new approach to it, which leads us to our final member of the visiting team. We have an observing member, Jennifer Schlying, is actually the CAPRA accreditation manager for NRPA. She is the member of the National Association that oversees this entire program. And she reached out to us recently and asked if she could join the Louisville visit as an observing member to see how this new process is laying out. We're very excited to have her. She's going to serve almost as a de facto advisor for us if needed. Again, hopefully not, she's just a fly on the wall. But she had lots of options. I believe there's 28 agencies across the country going for accreditation this year for, within the Dallas-Fort Worth area, and she selected us to come and be a part of our visit to see how things roll out. So to us, it shows a lot of promise and a lot of confidence that we're going to have a good visit and things are going to go according to plan. So what happens during this visit? Well, the review team will ask questions, and they'll request any additional evidence for standards they think that we could demonstrate a little bit better. As Jose mentioned, we submitted our assessment in March. During that time, they've already been reviewing what we've had. They've provided some initial feedback that we're already working on responding to. They're going to determine whether our agency has in fact met all standards that we have claimed that we've met ourselves. That includes our fundamentals and our non-fundamentals. And when will we hear what they think? So the CRT will spend their time with us, May 22nd through 24th. On that last day, as our closeout meeting, they will go through the standards, review everything we discussed, and they will give us kind of an inclination of what they plan to put in their report to the commission. So we'll have a pretty good idea if they think that we meet their standards, if we meet accreditation or not. Ultimately, they'll finalize their report within two weeks after leaving Louisville and submit that to the commission of the national body, NRPA. And that commission is who will review their visit, review our standard, and make a final decision that they will cover with us in October at the NRPA Annual Conference in Dallas in 2023, which is what we're very excited about. We hope everyone can come out and celebrate with us. And so that's why we say here, agencies are notified at the CAPRA Commission hearing held prior to the NRPA conference. So what we're doing to get ready for this, we're providing responses to that and feedback that we've received. We're scheduling meetings with key staff members and different partners that we have that have helped us put our assessment together so that they are available for our visitors during that three-day window. We have, you know, people from different departments, people from our community organizations, some of you as our city leaders, we're going to ask for you to help assist us in providing some evidence in the things that our visitors are asking for. We're working through logistics of scheduling, transportation, meals, and lodging for our visitors. We're providing them a space to meet. Our home base for the visit is going to be haring at our beautiful new facility, and we're providing them with any technology and access that they need to do the job that they need to do. We're setting up our meetings. We'll have an introduction meeting and then a meeting for each of our chapters that Jose mentioned that go through each of our standards, and then that review at the end of the visit as we talked about. And then we'll provide them a site tour of some of our facilities. At each of those stops, we'll let them get out and speak with key members of our staff, people who lead their areas, talk to them about the operations, how we implement our plans and procedures, so that they can see firsthand how those things roll out. And so we're excited for that part. And just a brief schedule so you can see what it looks like. So Monday, they'll come in the morning. We'll take... We'll take them to a beautiful lunch here at a local Louisville establishment. We'll have that first brief meeting to review processes. They'll get a tour of Thrive and Thrive Nature Park. And then that evening, we'll have a dinner and social with some of our city leaders, department leaders, our partners. We're inviting everybody here to join us that evening. You will receive an official email invite and those things, but I at least want to verbally say that we'd love to have you join us for that and meet our visitors, ask them questions about the process. They'll have questions for you about Louisville, and so it'll be a great opportunity to communicate and build that relationship. Tuesday is going to be the long day of the visit. In the morning, we'll start out with meetings going through all of those standards that we've discussed. Again, we'll take them to lunch, and then the afternoon, we fill it with our facility tours, and then we'll finish up at dinner and then let them go back and decompress at their hotel. And then Wednesday, we'll have one final morning of meetings. We'll get that end-of-visit report and review so that they can let us know what they plan on sending up to the commission. We'll take them to lunch, and then they have flights scheduled to head back home that afternoon. So again, for the entire process, and specifically that Monday evening dinner, you are invited. We'd love to have you join us and get to be a part of the process that we're so excited about, and you're invited to October when we hopefully get the good news that we've been accredited. So at this point, we'll open it up if you have any questions.
Have you budgeted for shipping barbecue to New Jersey?
Yeah. We are sending Francisco a little care package.
Okay, okay, good, well played. Looks great, very excited. So what does this do for us, the accreditation? What does that allow for moving forward, once we get it? Because of course, we're going to get it.
Yeah, well, no question. We're both on the same page. What does it do for us? The benefits are, you know, first and foremost, just as an operation, it is an agency, it makes sure that we're following best practices, that we're conducting trainings at a regular pace, that we have plans and procedures to make sure that we're successful. But also, it's key for funding opportunities. As Jose mentioned, less than 1% of agencies in the country have this accreditation. And so when we go for grant funding and when we go for projects and additional monies, putting on there that we're CAPRA accredited already gives us a step ahead. It brings us to the top of those application pools. And things like Texas Parks and Wildlife, where we have our approved master plan, this kind of feeds into that same kind of thought process. And then also, it dictates that we have a top-notch Parks and Rec program. We provide quality of life for the people of Louisville, and that this is a community worth investing in.
Is an accreditation good for a period of time? How often does it have to be renewed?
Five years. So every five years to go through reaccreditation, we do this whole process all over again. But in order to make sure that we don't get accreditation in October and just put it aside for four years and nine months and then try to pick it all back up, we are required to do annual reports on our standards. With those annual reports, they will randomly audit departments. So we could have an audit done within that five-year period, but if nothing else, every five years, we go through a full review of our standards with a new visit team. Questions?
Appreciate you guys really. I know it's a lot of work to get these kinds of things done, so I'm excited to see if we can bridge the gap and make it happen. All right, with that, we will take a break until the meeting, which will reconvene at 7:00 PM, regular session. We have no, there's no closed session tonight. That's crazy. All right, it is 7 o'clock, and we're going to call this regular session of the Louisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. First up on the agenda is invocation with Councilmember Troyer.
Please stand and join me in a moment of reflection and contemplation. Thank you.
Councilmember Merin?
Please join me in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all. Honored under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. I've got Jason Hunt and the Public Services staff. You guys mind joining me at the podium? So this month, I think it's important because we do laud a lot of weight and give a lot of recognition to the guys that wear the badges and the uniforms. But the guys that truly get in there and make sure everything works are right here behind me. It's our Public Works team. And I can tell you right now, if toilets don't flush and taps don't work, there'll be a lot of upset people in this community. So these guys, these guys do the dirty work. I've seen them in the middle of the night dealing with busted water mains. I've seen them in the middle of snowstorms trying to shut off neighborhoods to make sure things stay safe. These are unsung heroes, and they may not have a flashy badge, but maybe we need to work on that. So I appreciate you guys. So we have a quick proclamation here for Public Works Week. Whereas water is basic and essential need to all humankind and all living things to sustain life, and whereas water is limited resource and should be used wisely, and the water supply protected by preventing pollution and conserving water. And whereas public works and utilities provide essential services needed for the protection of health and welfare of our community as part of their everyday lives. And whereas the support of a satisfied and informed citizenry is vital to the professional operation of the public works utility system, an essential program such as water production and distribution, wastewater treatment and collection, environmental services, streets and storm drainage, traffic and fleet operations, and public buildings and facilities. And whereas the quality and capability of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and scale of public services employees. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and committed personnel who staff the Public Services Department is significantly influenced by citizen attitudes and appreciation of the important work they perform. Now therefore, I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Louisville, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7th through the 13th, 2023, as National Drinking Water Week, and May 21st through 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week. And I urge all of our citizens and civic organizations to understand and recognize the contributions of the Public Services Department in providing for our daily utility needs and protecting the health, safety, and well-being of our community. Proclaim this the first day of May 2023. You guys are awesome. Let's give them a hand.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jason Hunt. I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor, to Council, to the City Manager's Office for acknowledging the hard work, you know, 24/7 operation that is Public Services. We just want to thank you for your continued support over the years, and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate it. I think we're good. Need to flip this around, don't I? Seriously, unsung heroes, those guys. Next up, we have a public hearing. Public hearing, consideration of an ordinance adopting youth recreation program standards of care in compliance with Texas Administrative Code 745.115, paragraph 3. The Texas Department of Family and Protective Services regulates various child daycare operations. Under the Texas Human Resources Code 42.041B14 and DFPS Rules 40TAC 745.1153, the camps and after-school programs operated by the City of Louisville Parks and Recreation Department are exempt from these regulations, provided that the City Council annually adopt youth recreation program standards of care. The proposed standards are updated to ensure accuracy and consistency in language used throughout the code, as well as including updates to the water safety and staff training requirement. It is recommended that the City Council approve. The ordinance is set forth in the caption above. We do have Stacy and Nia, our Director of Parks and Recreation, available for any questions. If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Council, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion to approve the ordinance is set forth in the caption.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council adopting standards of care for youth recreational programs and amending Article 6 Standards of Care for Youth Recreation Programs, Chapter 10 Parks and Recreation of the Louisville City Code, providing for repealer severability at an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing.
I'm sorry, Mayor, for clarity, I jumped on top of William. William had actually made the motion, so I motioned that instead of William.
Jennifer, you got that captured? All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Item E, Visitor Citizen Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping a feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have one request to appear before the City Council, and it is Ms. Nancy Sansom. Nancy, if you'd like to come on up? Nancy's here to speak about senior housing, and if you could please state your name and address for the record.
It's a pleasure to meet, it's a pleasure to meet with you tonight and all the City Council and staff. My name is Nancy Sansom. I live at 4015 South Garden Ridge Boulevard, apartment 2226 Louisville, at an independent senior living community. I am the resident coordinator and spokesperson, and I represent our many active and dedicated seniors attending this meeting tonight for our organization called Louisville Senior
More homework, awesome. I'll distribute these while Nancy continues.
Okay. We want you to know how much we appreciate working with the Louisville City Council, the City Manager's Office, and the staff. This has meant a lot to us by fostering and insisting us in response to senior tenants and others that are facing this immediate emergency housing crisis. Just to update you, in your packets, there is an article that was printed in the Dallas Morning News, the editor section, and it's, as I said, it's in your packet. This article was printed on April 16th of this year, and it was from our organization. And after 30 tries, we got it finally printed. It outlines major housing problems and new evictions that are increasing within Louisville and elsewhere. Also, the articles ask our legislators to take a legal action to avoid future turmoil in the rent market. Our organization has jointly written to Attorney General Ken Paxton to investigate these unaffordable skyrocketing rent increases, and there are almost 37,000 residents last year in Dallas area that were evicted. This is directly related to the artificial intelligence algorithm monopoly nationwide. And if you see real pages in Google, you'll find it. Just to point out an example of increasing tenant needs for emergency rent relief assistance, the Texas Rent Relief Program spent around $53 million on last Monday, and then the app crashed on the same day it was opened. And that was after 10,000 tenants who needed rent assistance crashed the program. This demonstrates the tremendous need for more ongoing emergency rent relief. As almost all agents' rent relief has been exhausted except CCA, this situation demonstrates how severe this growing crisis has become. Our one hope is in future rent subsidies proposed by partnering between Denton County and Louisville City Government. These new funds, when approved, would greatly assist those of us to remain in our homes. We are very grateful for your consideration and in your efforts in guidance and in helping us to protect this rent assistance for those who are unable to protect themselves. And currently, we have at least eight people that are not going to be able to pay their rent in May at Evergreen. Thank you. And we're going to take a break, but we'll be back in September.
No, you will. Thank you so much. Appreciate all the updates. Jennifer, do we have any other requests for speak? Okay. Item F, Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, speaker card, or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Do we have any requests for removal? All right. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, Council, I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Consent agenda is approved, five to nothing. Item G, six, Regular Hearing. Consideration of Appointing a Replacement Representative and an Alternative Representative to the North Central Texas Council of Governments Regional Emergency Preparedness Planning Council. Mayor Protem Jones was nominated by the City Council on March 16th, 2020, and subsequently appointed to the North Central Texas Council of Governments Regional Emergency Preparedness Planning Council, EPPC. The North Central Texas Council of Governments Executive Board appointed Mayor Protem Jones to a two-year term representing population category 80,000 to 119,999. His current term expires in August 2024. The council meets on a quarterly basis and is composed of elected officials from participating cities and counties. Councilmember Patrick Kelly currently serves as the alternate representative for the council. Mayor Protem Jones is advised he will be unable to fulfill the rest of his term on this committee. City Council will need to consider appointing a replacement representative to the EPPC. Should the City Council decide to move Councilmember Kelly to the representative position, they will also need to consider an alternate representative to fill in for the representative if needed. The nomination form for the replacement and alternate representative form needs to be returned to the NCTCOG Executive Board. It's recommended that the City Council consider appointing a replacement representative, and if necessary, an alternate representative to the North Central Texas Council of Governments Regional Emergency Preparedness Planning Council is set forth by the caption above. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I will move to appoint Patrick Kelly as the replacement representative and Councilwoman Cade as the alternate representative to the North Central Texas Council of Governments Regional Emergency Preparedness Planning Council is set forth in the caption.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Councilmember Kelly, thank you so much for volunteering for this. It's a really cool board. You really get to see a lot of interesting ways that the Council of Governments coordinates as far as emergency resources. And PD and fire will have you back on that one. All right, item H, Reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Meredith, do you mind if we start with you?
Sure. First of all, I want to give a shout out to staff for Color Palooza. I think it was probably our best event I've seen. It just keeps getting better and better, like the fact that there was a wide range of activities for everybody. Also, library activities for the week, Storytime at Central Park for families with children of all ages, Friday, May 5th, 9:00 to 9:30. No registration required. Central Park, Edmonds Lane. And then Friends of Louisville Public Library Summer Book Sale, Friday, June 2nd, 4:00 to 7:00 pre-sale, and Saturday, June 3rd, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, I would like to second Councilmember Meredith's comments about Color Palooza is a great event. On a personal note, I was privileged to be a part of our Louisville Morning Rotary Booth sponsoring Painted Rocks. And our only problem was we ran out of rocks so fast that we were the main attraction on the block for about two hours, and then the rest of the day, zero. the main attraction on the block for about two hours, and then the rest of the day, zero. So anyway, but it was a great event, and thanks to all the staff that participated. It did a tremendous job. And I have some events for Lewisville Grand Theater. Upcoming performances, we have Clyburn in the community with Jiwan Yang, presented by the Clyburn and the City of Lewisville on May 2nd. A night of stand-up presented by the City of Lewisville on May 5th, and there will be two shows that evening or that day. Acoustic jam sessions, as always, on Friday nights, 6 to 9, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. Activities, we have garden secrets class, gardening for birds and butterflies, presented by Keep Lewisville Beautiful, coming up on May 4th. And exhibitions, there is art in life exhibition by Lewisville poet Laureate Yun Su Nam, presented by the City of Lewisville, and that's going on until May 13th. And Lewisville ISD Art Show Elementary West, presented by the LISD through May 2nd. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lukey.
No report, Mayor.
No report.
Mayor, City Council, park fans, just a reminder that our Friends of Lila group is putting on their annual barbecue and blues fundraiser out at Lila on May 13th. It's an awesome evening on the prairie with good music and good food and just being out there at Lila, so I invite everyone to join us if you can.
It's a really good time.
Mayor, thank you for the recognition of both National Public Works Week and National Drinking Water Week. We got guys out there working right now. A lot of them are out there. Otherwise, we'd had a better showing here today. But we'll be sure to pass on your words. We have a luncheon to celebrate back at our shops. We appreciate the support. And speaking of drinking water, so Lewisville's drinking water does come from Lake Lewisville. It happens to be sitting right at the normal pool elevation of 522, so happy to report that.
There we go. Thanks, Jen.
No report, sir.
Thank you.
Couple of quick things, Mayor. There is another story stroll that's out of East Hill Park on Thursday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, the 10th at 4:00 PM. That's our newest story stroll, I believe. Is that right? Yep. So head out there. It's great. So much went on in the past couple of weeks. Color Blues, I'd be missed if I didn't recognize that as well. That was a lot of fun this year. It's always a great time. But also, we had a great KLB cleanup, Keep Lewisville Beautiful cleanup over the weekend. Fantastic work out there as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Green?
I just wanted to mention that despite the fact that the lake is at the normal pool level, we are still under water restrictions, which started today. So I believe it goes back to the same schedule we had last year, based on either your odd address or an even address. The website, go to the city's website to see which one you fall under so you can see when you're able to water. But automated and manual sprinklers are not allowed between the hours of 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM. So just keep that in mind. And the handy-dandy little app that we have is also a great way to, if you see somebody who's kind of habitually violating the water restrictions, you can report it there. And you can do that anonymously, too, if that's a concern of yours as well. And then I also just wanted to mention that this weekend is Election Day, so I don't remember what our current count was on early voting, but we need people to get out and vote. This is really important that we vote in our local elections. So if you haven't early voted, I think the last day to early vote is tomorrow. Is that right? So I went in there on Friday because the weather was kind of not so great, and people were all kind of staying home. I walked in there, and I was out in three minutes. The ballot is real short. Just get in there and do it. And that's all I had.
Thank you. Councilmember James?
So the deadline is approaching for the Boards and Commissions Committee. You ever wonder how we get up here? A lot of us started on a Board or Commission to get involved with the city. There's also Citizens University, if you want to learn about the city and how it operates. It's nine months, I think. It meets once a month, but the Boards and Commissions, there are a number of them, check them out, see what you're interested in, and apply today. That's how you get it started. And before you know it, you could be sitting up here having fun.
Doing the work.
Yep, yep. And I just want to say, Color Palooza was awesome. It was probably the most activity I saw there. We had a little bit of rain. I saw a lot of our staff out there having fun, too. So, you know, come participate, get active, go vote. And also, may the fourth be with you, for all my Star Wars fans. For those of you who liked the other show, eh, whatever.
You and your hokey religions. Gina, anything? All right. I do have two small things. Number one was the groundbreaking for Glory Park or La Gloria. This past Saturday was amazing, so exciting to be out there, be breaking ground on a beautiful new park. Had the opportunity to walk the entire property, which I had not done before. It's going to be really cool. So can't wait to see that. And that's about a year process, so we're excited for all the stakeholders in that neighborhood. The other bit of-
Dirt was moving today.
Yeah, dirt's already moving, so it's exciting. I also did want to do a quick update on our state legislature. Crandotemish has a bill that passed unanimously earlier today from the House regarding massage parlors that is unheard of typically in divided government like we have down there. There's usually somebody that has a need to be on the other side. So we're excited about that bill that actually originated here in Lewisville, and I think it's going to give our police some more teeth if we can get it through the Senate, which we've got a really good shot there. There is also another bill looking to have Texas State Technical College come to Denton County, and we are pushing for a state funding bill for that as well. So that's the next hurdle. It looks like we've got a good opportunity for the door to open for them to actually build in Denton County. But then the other piece is to fund it. So with that surplus of money down there, maybe they can find a way to throw a little cash to help get that off the ground. So I'm really pushing for that. I know Council has been excited about the opportunity as well, so we're going to keep working. So little bits of bright and good news coming out of Austin so far, aside from some of the other stuff. With that, we do not have any closed session, and as there is no additional action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we are adjourned at 7:24.